I'm going to start with the mic now we get started with the democracy council meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody here. We have a kind of a big crowd, one of the biggest crowd since we started our meetings a couple of months ago. So, welcome everybody. At this time, we will start with our invocation and the pledge allegiance. I'll have the city clerk announce those two individuals.
Okay, Minister Jim Crowell from Calvary Montclair will be providing the invocation, and the pledge will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Rue.
Right. And I know that council member Lopez is running a little late, so he apologizes. And then in addition to that, after the pledge allegiance, I'll ask for due a moment of silence and remembrance of Mayor Paul Eaton. Thank you. Please stand.
Thank you. Sabao, Father God, we come before you this evening, Lord, oh Creator of heaven and earth and all things, Lord. We just ask that you just be here tonight, Lord. We ask, Lord, that you be with all the council members, Lord, and the mayor, and that you give them wisdom, Father God, on the things that come before them for the city of Montclair, Lord. We just ask your covering on this city, Lord. We ask that you be with all those that bring their petitions here tonight, Lord, that they may be heard and that they may be handled in a fair manner. Lord, we come before you and we ask you, Lord, that you be with all our first responders this evening, Lord, our police officers and our firefighters and those that protect our city, Lord. We just ask that you give them protection, Lord, and be with their families, Lord. And we ask that your Holy Spirit be here tonight, Lord, and that you just bless this meeting in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me as we salute the flag of our nation.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can still withstand, three years ago, Mayor Paul Eaton passed, and I know he's been a great mayor of the city of Montclair. So, let's just have a moment of silence to remember our great Mayor Paul Eaton. Thank you. Can we please have roll call?
Councilmember Lopez is not yet here. Councilmember Martinez, here. Councilmember Johnson?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rue?
Present.
Mayor Dutre?
Present.
And we'll note when Councilmember Lopez arrives.
Thank you. The next item is an exciting item. This is the annual home beautification awards. That's done by the Community Activities Commission. And this award, obviously, this year is for the year 2021. And I'm going to ask that our Community Activities Commissioner Darlene Ferraro, please come on up and announce our winners. And with that, I'll come down there. I'll use this mic, and then I'll meet you, the winner, down there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Dutre. For the past 26 years, the Community Activities Commission has sponsored the home beautification program to recognize Montclair residents who demonstrate their community pride through the upkeep and maintenance of their homes. This year, 14 homes were nominated by members of the Community Activities Commission. There were two judging categories, traditional landscape and drought tolerant landscape. One winner was selected in each category. We will now be showing you a PowerPoint presentation of our winning homes accompanied by a brief description. As you will see, the winners will be, should be very proud of their work and have, that they have done to maintain their homes and property. Each winner will receive a frame certificate and a gift card to a Montclair restaurant or business of their choice. Later, they will also receive a sign to be placed in their front yard announcing their award. As our first, as our first honored winners are Martin and Elvia Ramirez, whose home is located at 4882 Olive Street. As past winners of the 2011 Home Beautification Awards, these homeowners are obviously dedicated to maintaining a lovely and inviting residence. The exterior of the home is reminiscent of a tropical oasis. A large luxuriant tree generates ample shade. Bird of paradise plants line the front fence. Miniature palm trees are present throughout the yard, and a towering palm tree is present on both sides of the walkway. As you approach the home, a beautiful red brick and stone fence highlighted by pink, yellow, red, and red flowers lead you to the pathway that is preceded by a red brick stairs and a wrought iron present pedestrian gate. In addition of the addition of decorative accents such as a stacked wind spinner, vintage style post-mounted mailbox, and a personalized plaque that reads "House of Ramirez, established October 16, 1992," add personality to this property. In addition to the gorgeous greenery and potted plants, the enclosed front yard also features welcoming decor such as garden flags, shaded seating areas, and a beautiful blue front door embellished with a floral wreath. Furthermore, solidifying its place as a piece of paradise in a tranquil, three, is a tranquil, three-tier water fountain surrounded by a luscious landscape of shrubbery, oriental grasses, and an alpaca, alpaca tree. Congratulations to the Ramirez family for winning the 2021 Traditional Home of the Year Award.
Come on up, don't be shy. I am vaccinated, fully vaccinated. Come on up. Congratulations. On behalf of City of Montclair, I'll give you this nice plaque. Come on over, and would you like to receive it? On behalf of City of Montclair, congratulations. And you did it the second time. 10 years, 10 in the park. Perfect. Great. And we'll see you here 10 years again?
Yes.
All right.
Congratulations. Our second honored winner is Javier Alvarez, whose home is located at 5449 Granada Street. A meticulous mocha-covered cornered property framed with crisp white accents, this drought tolerant home will capture your attention. As you approach the property, the picture-perfect artificial turf will undoubtedly catch your eye. Surrounding the home is a beautiful split rail wood fence with a natural finish. The cement walkway that leads to the front door is accented on both sides by a single, by a simple waterwise garden composed primarily of gray and white landscaping rocks and smooth stones. The center of the gardens features succulents and cacti. Additionally, black solar lights are positioned along the path to illuminate the walkway after dark. To further boost the curb appeal, the home features a decorative front door with an oval window that pairs a central floral design with an intricate border. On the side of the house are vibrant, large-leaf tropical plants such as the bird of paradise, the elephant's ear, as well as a philodendrum tea tree. Complementing the tropical foliage are two palm trees located near the corner of the property that are accented by landscaping rocks and small boulders. The remainder of the yard is a drought tolerant dream. Lining the fence and circling the property are beds of small succulents and cactis surrounded by smooth stones and wood chips. Congratulations, Javier Alvarez, for winning the 2021 drought tolerant Home of the Year Award.
In fact, I don't know if I heard this, but I believe there's the old towels for both of you. So, hopefully, you guys enjoy the, a nice meal in the city of Montclair. And I wanted to recognize again the Community Activities Commission. There's four commissioners here today. Raise, raise your hands. Or five, actually, that are here today. So, thank you for the commission for doing this, going out in this community, driving the city, trying to find the homes. You do a great job. Thank you. Anybody wants to leave now? This is a good time to leave, or you're welcome to stay. Thank you. Okay. The next item is public comment, and this is an opportunity for most of the public that wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, or if they wish to speak on a consent calendar item, they can make us aware of at this time. If, obviously, if you're in the audience, either have a, if you have a blue card, I think it's called a blue card, you submit that, or you raise your hand. If you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand on Zoom if you wish to speak, and if you're on the phone, you wish to speak, you'll hit star six, I think star nine first to indicate that you want to speak, and then star six to unmute yourself. So, at this time, I'm going to ask the city clerk.
John, just a second, one second. Okay, our first speaker is in the council chambers, and it's Carolyn Raft.
And I'll just remind everybody, all the speakers, there is a five-minute time limit. Thank you. Hello, Carolyn.
Good evening. Actually, the person I have a comment for is not here. So, if he shows up before the public comment's over, then I would like to be called again, otherwise.
Well, in fairness, and this is an opportunity to speak right now, if you wish to speak.
That's fine. I'll wait till the next council meeting.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, so then we'll move on to the Zoom speakers. We have Stephen Oakworth, and let me go ahead and allow them to unmute themselves. They should be able to unmute themselves.
This is a Zoom?
Yes. Stephen Oakworth.
All right, Stephen, you there? Hello, Stephen? I cannot hear Stephen.
Yeah, he's not unmuting himself, so I'll go ahead and try the next person. So, the next one is Andrew Procop.
Okay, Andrew?
I'll ask them to unmute.
Hello, Andrew?
They are not unmuting themselves.
No, I mean themselves as well?
No, and they've had their hands raised, like, since the beginning of the meeting, so I don't know if it was an accident. So, we'll...
Okay, so let's...
Go ahead and go to the next one.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this one is a phone number that's ending in 774. So, I've allowed them to talk, so please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Bruce.
Hi, Bruce. We can hear you.
Is this, Bruce called for, just for information purposes?
Yes, Bruce called, 916 Stickmore Avenue, Montclair, California.
All right, Bruce, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, I just happen to be 300 feet away from the 4882 Olive Street Ramirez family's home. I went outside as soon as I heard that and looked at that beautiful house. Congratulations to that Ramirez family for winning the Traditional Home Award. In fact, that whole block on Olive, they all have beautiful homes. So, I, you know, they were up against some pretty stiff competition. It's great to get up in the morning and take a walk down Olive and see all the beautiful homes. The reason I'm calling in today, I just wanted, I'll speak right now for item B9, which is the Pacific Electric Trail. I don't need to put that one to the side. So, basically, it mentioned the fact that it needs an approval to continue the emergency funding. So, I just wanted to speak on behalf of that and say, the Pacific Electric Trail is a very important trail to, you know, the whole inland empire area and specifically to Montclair. It's a regional trail that brings a lot of, a lot of neighbors into our city for a brief moment. Some stop by and take advantage of our wonderful Montclair Transit Center. I know a lot of people who come down and, and visit some of the local businesses. So, I just wanted to, you know, reiterate my support for the funding that's going on for that item. And lastly, I just want to offer some support to people who are not yet vaccinated. I know that there's some trepidation out there, and thank the people that are currently vaccinated for COVID. But for the people who are thinking, you know, are worried about it, my only suggestion is just talk to your, you know, talk to somebody that you trust, and that would be your doctor. And if you, I would suggest that, you know, if you have any questions or concerns about the vaccination, the most important person you can talk to is your doctor. And I, I think that they would give you some great advice on whether that vaccination is, is safe and effective and, and whether you should do it. So, we're coming into a point now where the Delta version of this virus is going to overrun our hospitals and, and put people at risk, even people who don't have COVID. Emergency rooms can fill up fast, and I just ask that you think twice and consider getting your vaccine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You want to start with anybody else?
Okay, I'll go with the next person on Zoom who we have not tried yet, and that would be Richard Held.
Okay. Let's see, Richard Held, is he there?
Yes, he's just unmuted.
All right, go ahead, Richard.
Yes, I am the property owner at 10660 Silicon, and I was talking in support of the project next door.
Okay. That is a public hearing item. If you wish to wait until under a public hearing, you can speak at that time. But if you want to make comments at this time, that's...
No, I can wait. I didn't know when I was supposed to make my comments.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry about that.
No problem. We'll go back to you, Richard. Okay. Okay, and then who do you want to go with next?
Okay, so we're going to try the Stephen Oakworth again.
Okay, Stephen? Hello, Stephen, you there? Stephen?
Hello?
Yeah, Steve, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Online. I just wanted to bring you up to date on this matter because I know you're concerned about it. We got Friday night got a message from Khrushchev, which said that he would withdraw on these missiles, technicians, and so on, why they could not plan to invade Cuba. We then got a message, a public one, the next morning, which he said he would do that if we withdrew our missiles from Turkey.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Stephen. Your matter has nothing to do with the city of Montclair. City Attorney, is this an appropriate manner under the state of California law?
To be honest, I haven't understood any of this.
I'm hearing something about Turkey, and I'm hearing something about missiles.
So, we now have to wait to see how it unfolds. There's a good deal of complexities to it.
Stephen, Stephen, excuse me, Stephen, excuse me, Stephen, excuse me, Stephen, are you speaking about a matter of the city of Montclair, or are you speaking a matter that involves the U.S. State Department? Do you have a matter regarding the city of Montclair you wish to address? Okay, City Attorney, can you opine on this, please? Can you put the speaker on mute, please, for a second?
We can.
So, I would think that if we can do that, we can find us a dress band, even though maybe only one more chapter along the story.
Can you mute the speaker, please?
No, except that...
Thank you. So, the, Stephen, if you can hear me, I'm going to ask the city attorney to speak, but you're speaking on a matter that has nothing to do with the city of Montclair. This is an international matter, so I'm not sure why you're speaking, but I'll allow the city attorney to make an opine if, if, if you're, you have right to speak on something that has nothing to do with the city of Montclair. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the city council only addresses matters that are within the purview of their jurisdiction. Based on the little bit I've heard or that you've heard, it doesn't sound like this is a matter that would be appropriate to address the city council with. So, it's your, you have the ability to determine that you don't need to entertain any further comments from this individual unless it's concerning matters in the, related to the city of Montclair, or that can come before something that you can address, which doesn't appear that that happened.
Thank you. So, this is what we're going to do. I'll allow Stephen his constitutional right to speak, but if it's not related to the city of Montclair, we're going to move on to the next speaker. All right, Stephen, I'm going to give you another opportunity to speak. I'm going to give you three minutes. Go ahead. Go ahead, Stephen.
Good evening. In recent months, members of my administration and officials of the committee for the reelection of the president have been shot...
Okay, let's mute the individual. Stephen, thank you very much for your comments, and we'll move on to the next speaker.
Okay, so we will try Andrew Procop.
Is Andrew there? Hello, Andrew. How you doing, Andrew? Just one minute, please, Andrew. Okay, you have... Okay, can we, can we, obviously, this, can we mute that person as well? So, Andrew, again, I'm going to ask, if you have an item, if you have an item relating to the city of Montclair, you're more than happy to address it, but if you're going to be addressing on something that has nothing to do with the city of Montclair, then we will move on to the next speaker. So, I'm going to give Andrew one more time. All right. This is one of the, one of the risks when you have these type of meetings on Zoom, because anybody from anywhere can call in now and just kind of have fun with us. Okay, we can mute that. All right, we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, everybody. All right. So, we are now to who now? We're back to, those are the three.
Yeah, that was all of our Zoom, other than the one that's going to be for public hearings, so then we can go back.
Okay. Carolyn, do you wish to address the council at this point? Okay, I, then we'll move on to public hearings. And I know normally we do a presentation on public hearings, but this is a pretty simple manner. This is, this is to consolidate two lots into one, to develop 20 industrial condominium units at 10680 Silicon Avenue. This item already went to the planning commission, recommended approval for the, to the city council. I'm going to open up this public hearing, and I'm going to ask those any members of the public who wish to speak. I know we have a Richard Held that likes to speak.
Okay, you want to go ahead and...
Yeah, we'll take Richard now.
Thank you, City of Montclair, for the opportunity to speak. I would just like to say that I own the property at 10660 Silicon, and the lot that in question has been vacant for several years, and it attracts a lot of homeless people and other types of activities. And we would strongly support you approving this, this condominium project. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Richard. I don't believe we have any other, any other speakers on this item, or maybe have, I'm not sure, Bruce, that's Bruce there wants to speak on this?
Yeah, Bruce, his hand is still up. So, if he does not put it down, I can go ahead and unmute him.
Bruce, are you there? Hello, Bruce?
I'm sorry, I forgot to put my hand down, but basically, I do support that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no members, no more members in the public who wish to speak, I'm going to close this matter up, bring this matter back to the city council. Any members of the council want to speak, or is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for the item. It's a fairly routine item for those in the public. I would like to make a motion for the item as presented. It's a lot consolidation.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Rue, second by Councilmember Johnson. Can we still do the electronic vote, or are we back to, we have to...
We can still do the electronic vote.
Okay.
I just have to note that Councilmember Lopez is not here.
It's easier to just do roll call right now, and just make it easier on you right now.
Yeah, probably...
Mr. Mayor, before you vote, just for the record, under fiscal impact, if you can agree to eliminate the first sentence under fiscal impact, it suggests that this item is to be continued to a future meeting. That, of course, is not the case.
We'll make that as part of the motion. I believe both Mr. Rue and Ms. Johnson agreed to that. And then we'll go ahead and then take a roll call vote.
Lopez?
I know Mr. Lopez is walking in, but I'll assume he'll abstain on this one since this is a public hearing item. Go and take the roll call vote. Oh, we can vote now? Okay. Then if you want to vote, your voting machine's in front of you. And so, we will note the vote is 401. Okay. All right, next item is consent calendar. So, I'll start on my left. Any members on my left wish to remove an item on the consent calendar?
No, thank you.
How about my right?
Wait.
Oops, excuse me.
I'd like to pull three items, B like boy 10, and C like Charles 8 and 9. For the record, I just...
Okay, C8 and C9 are being pulled. Okay.
I actually just pulled C8 and 9, so, because I need to abstain. I just need to let you know that.
Oh, I just want to abstain on C8 and C9?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I also need, I need to abstain on A1. Those are the minutes. Okay, so we'll note the abstention. How about my right? Anybody want to pull anything on the right?
Mr. Mayor, I need to pull A2, B10, and B10.
Okay, B10s are being pulled.
Okay, thank you. And that is it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I assume A2 is your abstaining of that. Wait, A2.
I actually have a statement mainly regarding that. I just need to find the page real quickly.
Okay. I know Mayor Pro Tem Rue was absent for the special joint meeting on A3, so you want to abstain on that bill?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's do this. Let's just, I'm assuming everybody supports the consent calendar, so maybe make it easier. We'll just go down the line here. So, let's start with B10. What's, why don't you go ahead and start with B10?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for staff. As I look at some of these records that need to be destroyed, I understand that records need to be held for a certain period of time, and some of them are very, very old, and their box number, whatever they are. My question is, can we, going forward, rather than store any more paper documents, can we store all of the documents electronically so that eventually we will not be occurring those costs?
Well, we have been in a long-term transition to migrate all paper documents to electronic format. We have a software program that the city's been using basically since the 90s. But given the volume and the lack of personnel to basically sit at a computer 10 hours a day to do that transition of the hard copy documents to electronic, it's a long, slow process, but it is something that is ongoing on a regular basis. And by doing that, we have reduced substantially the number of boxes that are in storage, both at city premises as well as off-site storage sites. So, that's a process we will continue to do to eventually get it to where almost all documents are electronic form.
I appreciate that.
Okay, any more, any more questions?
Mr. Mayor, with respect to item B10, I have a question on page 26 of our agenda regarding a distribute, a destruction list from the finance department. A group of those records, cashier reports, AU plus four, they're only, based on the dates that they're covered and printed in the report, they're only 2009 to 2020, I mean 2020, I mean 2019 to 2020. So, I'm wondering if that's just a bit too soon to be shredding records. There was only just one or two, well, we're in the next fiscal, that's two fiscal years ago.
Right. And the documents actually have been held much longer than they're required under both the California Public Records Act and by the policy that has been adopted by the city council. These are basically computer-generated documents. They don't really have a lot of value once the data in them is used. It's perishable information and really doesn't have a lot of value going forward. and really doesn't have a lot of value going forward.
And I assume the financial institution has electronic copies of this as well, if there's a need to go back.
Yes, correct.
So, okay. So I know item A-2 was moved, or was removed, so is that you, Councilmember Lopez?
Yes. Let me find my page. Just a statement. I know it's documented in the minutes of this report for this council meeting from July, I'm sorry, from June 28. I did request a list of all part-time benefited employees at that time. I still have not, I even checked my box before I got in here, have not gotten them. So whoever on staff dropped the ball, I'd like to still get in the last fiscal year, the part-time benefited positions that were in that budget at that time, and then which ones, I believe there's only six remaining. I'd like to know what positions and departments those are under this current fiscal year, please. With that, I'll move approval of the minutes, item A-2.
Well, we're going to do the whole, the whole consent calendar. So you want to move the whole consent calendar? And is that, am I, do they hear that, Councilmember Lopez?
Well, I'd like to actually vote on no on one particular item that I, that has already been polled.
Which one are you going to vote no on?
B-10.
Going to vote no on B-10? Okay. So let's do it this way. We're going to, we're going to approve, make a move, the consent calendar with exception of item B-10. We're going to recognize that I'm going to abstain on item A-1. Bill is going to abstain on item A-3, and Denise is going to abstain, recuse yourself. I don't know what the proper one, maybe I'll say recuse yourself on items for conflict of interest, whichever, conflict of interest, you just could recuse yourself on items C-A and C-9. So let's just take a roll call vote.
On the complete calendar?
Except, except B-10.
Who's doing the motion? Sorry.
I'm doing the motion. I believe Councilmember Johnson seconded the motion.
Okay, yep.
Everybody's voted?
This is for the remainder, not those items you mentioned.
With exception of item B-10. Okay, with exception of item B-10, the consent calendar is approved, and we will note the abstentions, and also recourse of item C-A, C-8 and C-9 for Councilmember Johnson. Recusing herself, excuse me. Okay. Then I believe Councilmember Johnson made a motion on item B-10 for approval. Is there a second? I'll second that. And let's take a roll call Okay, that's adopted 4 to 1. We will now go down to communications, and I'm going to start with the police department for an update for the fireworks enforcement detail and also the national night out. I know the chief is on vacation today.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff. As you guys know, fireworks has been kind of a hot topic over the last several years, last year being probably one of the busiest years we've ever had with over 100 calls for service of various fireworks, and it was all over the news with fireworks all across Southern California. I'm happy to report that this year has been, there was a significant reduction in the amount of calls for service related to fireworks. Not really able to put our fingers on exactly one thing, but it was probably a combination of a bunch of things that the police department, along with other members of city staff, had done to get the message out to the members of the community about the dangers of fireworks, the municipal codes prohibiting fireworks, potential civil liability concerns. And this started all the way back during May of this past year, where we originally started sending flyers out in the trash mailers and sewer bills notifying community members of state law of city's municipal code regarding fines and penalties for illegal fireworks possessions and use. On May 6, we began handing out fireworks prohibited advisal forms. For those of you that don't know, we've been doing a similar type form for noise complaints, and have been very effective at utilizing these for the last, actually, almost two decades now. Just notifying a person, hey, information has been obtained that this may be a location where illegal fireworks are being used. No penalty associated with it, it's just a, hey, either we or some neighbors are watching, and you may be subject to a fine if you get caught with them. We started issuing those on May 6. Over the course of the entire time, we actually issued out, well, the night of the 4th, we issued out 15 of those fireworks prohibited advisal forms, responded 82 calls for service versus 106 just last year. And we also issued out 10 administrative citations, and two of those citations for actual municipal code violations. And a lot of that was done in cooperation with the city's code enforcement that augmented our patrol forces and went out with us in cooperation, responding to several of our calls for service, freeing our officers up for priority calls for service. So I'd like to thank them for their assistance that night, along with the fire department. We started this year to help get the word out to the public. On May 17, we purchased new illegal fireworks signs for all our cars, the ones we had. We lost most of them on the freeway and in the car wash, so we have new signs that stay stuck to the cars, including all city yards vehicles that were out and about, starting all the way back in May. And in June, some additional flyers went out related to California law and municipal code violations. June 14, public works placed signs throughout the community, basically advising against the use of fireworks within the city. June 21, the city launched its online illegal fireworks reporting portal, which is an app that was developed in cooperation with the county and with our IT department, to have members of the community anonymously report suspected fireworks, including their location, give us something to follow up on that we could touch base with them at a later time. And then on June 22, the police department released us, we did a social media press blast regarding fireworks being illegal in Montclair and how to report them. All of this, in combination, I believe, helped curtail significantly the amount of calls for service that we did have regarding illegal fireworks. Again, it was still sizable amount of calls, but it was a nearly 50% reduction, well, 40% reduction from the year prior, and it's been on a steady downhill scent. So, and even since then, we've issued several additional violate, several additional violations, including advisals. We haven't stopped issuing those. People still have residual fireworks that they have been continuing to light up, so we're still continuing to use that reporting system. We're still continuing to issue citations and leave the advisals. But all in all, it's been a very successful effort, given that it actually had been significantly reduced from years prior. And a completely unrelated note, I'd like to invite everyone to this year's national night out. We welcome it back after a year hiatus. It's going to be really nice to get members of the community out together again, and I believe we've already started our movies and concerts in the park. So that's kind of a good thing to see everybody back out again. This year's national night out is scheduled for August 3. Starts at 6:30 PM, runs till 9:30 PM at Alma Hoffman Park. And just as a reminder, national night out is a community police awareness raising event throughout the United States, held the first Tuesday of August. This event has been held annually since 1984, and is sponsored by the National Association of Town Watch in the United States and Canada. The event is meant to increase awareness about police programs in communities such as drug prevention, neighborhood watch, and other anti-crime efforts. The police department, along with Montclair Fire, will be on hand to speak to the public and allow kids the opportunity to see and handle some of the tools of the trade. We will have members of our local government present, along with multiple nonprofit entities with booths providing various forms of services and community awareness materials. The American Red Cross will be set up again for a blood donation at the community center, and we'll have a free photo booth and free face painting for the kids, as well as giveaways such as glow bracelets, coloring books, crayons, fingerprint ID kits. There's also going to be some food on site as well. JoJo's Grill Dog has agreed to come, as well as Sweet, Mr. Sweet and Snowy, who most of you are familiar with from all of our other events. And human services will also have snacks and treats available for purchase. And I believe our movie this year is going to be Frozen 2, that starts at about 7:30 PM, depending on how soon the sun sets. And some of the nonprofits that have agreed to attend our national night out this year, West Valley Mosquito and Vector Control, Victims Advocates Office from the DA's office, San Bernardino County Tobacco Control Program, Montclair College, Boy Scouts, US Bank, to hand out anti-identity theft. They have an anti-identity theft nonprofit arm that will be on site. The I-10 corridor project will be on hand to answer questions. Easter Seals of Southern California, along with all of our local representatives, will either be present or have a representative present as well.
Great. I just want to state one thing. I want to, you know, I know Gabe Funderell's in the audience or not, but I know Gabe in Code Enforcement, there's Gabe. Gabe and Robert from Code Enforcement spent about a week driving Montclair at evening, responding to calls for fireworks service. And then also want to recognize, obviously, the police department, and I know we had additional police officers having to work that weekend, especially the 4th of July weekend, and I appreciate that. And I also want to recognize the fire department, because I know the fire department was also out patrolling, I believe, both the 4th and the 5th, I'm correct, or at least I know for sure the 4th, they were out. And, and so I'm happy, the results, obviously, I think last year, a lot of people had a lot of free time and extra money, and so they were home, having fun, unfortunately. And this year, I think the same, a lot of the same folks actually had other things to do, and that was good for us. Any questions or comments by councilmembers? Go, go ahead. I'm sorry, Councilmember Lopez first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lieutenant Kamansky, thank you for providing this information on behalf of Chief Abels. Couple comments. The numbers are definitely down considerable to, considering the stats that came in from 2020, and then obviously 2019. It seemed like 2020, there was a wide proliferation of the use of fireworks and whatnot. I would like to note, as the mayor alluded to, fire was on patrol as well on the night of the 4th. It's my understanding that based on calls that came in, there were four or five fires within an hour, hour and a half period shortly after those fireworks were, started being fired off. I know that a few of those incidents were on Facebook. I believe one was a palm tree on Canoga that posed some danger to residents that were living in the area. Thank you to PD for helping with the evacuation efforts at that particular incident and helping fire with respect to that. I do know that fire was out on patrol, and because of them being on patrol, they were able to identify some other hotspots, if you will. So I appreciate the team effort from both departments. It really speaks volumes, and I, I'm grateful. I know there's a slew of residents that were grateful as well on Facebook that the fire didn't get out, any more out of hand than it did, and it didn't exacerbate the problem. I rode along on two occasions with PD. I rode during this period, the May 6 period, up until July 3. I believe it was just maybe one or two weeks into, or the last two weeks of June, I rode with PD. And we did hear fireworks going off as I was on patrol at night with the officer. It was, it was more annoying than problematic at the time. I mean, I don't know what other officers responded to the areas in which those calls were coming in, but they were happening. But nonetheless, they were a little bit less than the prior year. But on the 5th, I picked July 5 to do a ride along because I was anticipating a large volume of fireworks being shot off in the city. And being that that was a Monday, and the holiday was technically or officially recognized, or observed, rather, on that day, I thought I'll ride with the officer and see what we find. Well, to my displeasure, I guess, there was a lack of activity on the 5th, and folks did not fire off as many fireworks. I think only one incident in the course of a six, seven-hour ride that I had with the officer. So, I mean, that's a good thing. It's always good when there's a little bit less activity, I guess, with the police officers, but nonetheless, I was expecting some more, just given the past history and the hotspot sheets that the chief had given, given us. But anyhow, I appreciate that. I would still like for us, as a city, to look at, and I'll bring these comments back to council and my colleagues, look at addressing the fireworks issue, whether we want to entertain updating ordinances or whatnot, or addressing the administrative fines and whatnot. Now that I see Gabe out there, I apologize. I am forgetting Gabe. Thank you. I know you came by the alley a few times explaining what you were doing. You were sharing, sharing with me what you were doing. I appreciate what you and Robert are doing as well out there on your end. Code Enforcement's very much appreciated, and thank you for being proactive in that regard. I would like for us to reassess our ordinances with respect to the issue and how this city addresses it. And I know that there was even discussion of perhaps, if the situation regarding fireworks was going to be too problematic and unenforceable, then perhaps this city, and again, this is just an idea, I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, broach the idea, perfect timing on the sound, broach the idea of allowing safe and sane fireworks, or, and perhaps allowing some of our nonprofit groups and our women's clubs and Seroptimists and the Chamber sell fireworks so they can make a profit that would help them with their budgets. I know that was brought up as a potential idea and a plan. But if we do have, God forbid, any incident like Ontario did, or even the city of LA did, I will no doubt be jumping on this issue once again and pushing it pretty hard. I think we have a good lull, and I hope the lull continues, but if not, I think we need to seriously address it and combat it. Thank you.
Okay, anymore, I'll see. Mayor Protemru?
Yes, I just want to thank Public Safety, Police, Fire, everyone, all of our staff who are involved in this. Clearly, the efforts paid off with the reduction. Clearly, residents are listening. I think in many cases, the ones who are doing, who are even now setting them off are the people who want to do bad things anyway. You can't stop everyone. You can't be in everyone's home preventing them from doing this. But I think you've done an excellent job with this. My neighborhood, from what I could assess, was fairly quiet. I had my, my front windows closed. I was in the back room doing some reading and checking in on my dogs. They were fairly calm, so that was a good sign. I think it was a fairly quiet night in Montclair. I know other cities had some problems, but we didn't, and that's to everyone's credit. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be quick and not repeat what has already been said, but I have to tell you, Lieutenant Kamansky, that when we first started talking about taking efforts to minimize fireworks, I really didn't think it was going to happen. It's kind of like telling people they can't have a Christmas tree. And I really thought that no matter what we thought up, that nothing would change. And much to my shock and amazement, between police department, the fire department, the code enforcement department, you have made significant changes. And kudos to all of you on the team that had a part in making that happen.
Thank you. And actually, I briefly mentioned, but I kind of felt like I forgot. I know the fire department was out in force that night as well. And as I kind of mentioned, there's no really one thing that we could put our fingers on, other than it was a holistic approach across the board with many different branches of the city working together to try to make this happen, and I think there was a measure of success.
And it worked.
Hopefully, we can keep it up next year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, I'll just end by saying on the fireworks, I think last year, the pandemic was a huge issue of why we had so many. But, you know, one of the things, I think we did this, what we did this year is, there was a lot of advertising or marketing between the Facebook, between having the signs on the vehicle, the Meller that went out with the utility bill, and then the yard signs. That was, I don't know whose idea was that, but that got a lot of attention, the yard signs. So I understand, and this is, this is an issue that the last 10, 15 years at least, that we've been hearing about fireworks every year, and every city, every community is dealing with this, and unfortunately, there's no easy solution to resolve it. I don't think changing the ordinance is going to help. I, you know, and our fines $1,000, but I don't think if you increase to $5,000, that's going to change. So what I'll ask staff to do, and I know we have some lessons learned, and some good lessons from this time, is I'm going to ask staff to go back and look at what we did right, what we did wrong. Yard signs, for sure, next year, I think the only difference to yard signs is just make it easier to read, maybe have more to pass out. Staff, look at the, our fine, and see if we changed the fine from $1,000 to $5,000, is it going to make a difference in your mind? I don't think so, but I'll let staff come up with an idea, and if there's any changes required in the ordinance needed. And bring this back to the city council, maybe bring it back to the, let's say, by the end of the year. Give everybody some time to work on it, and then get prepared for next year. Okay? Is that good for everybody? Okay, I think the next person I'm going to have is Marcia, and she's going to talk about human services. And her, the, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Brandon mentioned, our 2021 summer concert and movie series got off to a great start last week at Alma Hoffman Park. We had a good crowd enjoying the outside environment and listening to the top 40 old-school classics of the band Cold Duck. Tomorrow will feature the movie Raya and the Last Dragon, beginning at sunset. We're figuring it around 8 o'clock. The evening will include free children's activities, and refreshments will also be for sale. A schedule of our upcoming movies and concerts can be found on our website, or I left a flyer at the door as you exit, and we look forward to seeing you at the park. I also have a schedule I'll pass around. And then I also just wanted to mention, I'm happy to announce the senior- And then I also just wanted to mention, I'm happy to announce the senior center is tentatively scheduled to reopen on Monday, August 2nd, at 11:00 a.m. for in-person dining of our lunch program. For those seniors who have been receiving a delivered meal, our Golden Express bus will be providing transportation to the center, Monday through Friday. For seniors who aren't comfortable yet dining in person, you will be able to pick up your lunch to go, as long as you pre-ordered your meal. Pickup is from 11:15 to 11:30, and in-person serving will start at 11:30 and end at 12:30. All meals are on a first-come, first-served basis. For everyone's safety, we will be asking that everyone wear a mask until their meal is served, and we will be offering both vaccinated and unvaccinated seating areas. We are in need of vaccinated volunteers to help in the senior center lunch program. If you are interested, please see me after the meeting, or call our senior center. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I want to say thank you to staff for bringing these events back. And it's also great that our seniors can finally come back and be inside and spend time with their friends and have lunch. So I appreciate staff doing that.
Mr. Mayor, I want to speak.
Oh, you want to speak? Go ahead. It's all yours.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to mention that at last week's event, when the Cold Duck Band was here, people were like all over the park. They weren't congregated in one space, and so I was kind of moving around amongst them. And one of the things I heard, if I heard it once, I know I heard it 20 times, "Oh my God, I'm so happy this is happening. I'm so glad to be out." There was more joy in that park than I have seen in a very long time. The only negative comment I heard was, "Why didn't we start sooner?" I was like, "Well, there was this little thing called a pandemic, so we probably couldn't." But everybody was so joyful and exciting, there were more people dancing, I was one of them. There's more people dancing than I've seen in previous years. It was a fabulous event. If I had to speculate, even though I did not have a counter, I would speculate that there were well over 200 people here, and everybody was smiling. The children were all excited about the little badges that they were getting from our police department. It was just a fabulous event, and I just want to say, Human Services, thank you. You all did a fabulous job.
Okay, City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have the two items, as indicated in the agenda, both to ask the council to meet in closed session, one regarding labor negotiations, and the other regarding real property negotiations. Other than those two items, I have nothing else this evening.
City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council want to report that the hardcore press is on in Sacramento to get Governor Newsom to sign a trailer bill that would advance $540 million for completion of the gold line from Pomona to Montclair. This has been a long-going push to get some state money coming into this project. Without state money, we would have to federalize the project, which would mean that we'd have to go under NEPA clearance, which would add significant time to not only going through the congressional process to get the funding, but then to complete the NEPA study to receive the environmentals on the project, and then move forward for construction. It is important that the governor consider the trailer bill before him that would grant this authorization, because if the funding is not approved prior to October 7th, then the project will have to be rebid as a separate project, which will add further delay to completion of the project to Montclair. Further, it would very likely indicate that there would be significant cost increases to the project because of the price of commodities, the price of labor. All of those have gone up even more so than they did when the project was put out the bid back in 2017. Of course, at that time, the bids that came in for the project put it well beyond what the construction authority had anticipated would be a $1.5 billion project. Instead, the bids were coming in at $1 billion and higher, or $2 billion and higher. So that put the construction authority in the position of paring down the project, and that is what they did. They extended it only from Glendora to Pomona. Now we need to complete the project from Pomona to Montclair. So hopefully, the governor will sign the legislation, or the trailer bill, that will authorize the funding to go forward. Then the construction authority has to complete certain agreements with SBCTA, as well as some other entities, including Metro, to make certain that the reimbursement programs are in place to allow Metro to guarantee the funding to the contractor, Keywood Parsons, so that they can incorporate the Pomona to Montclair segment in the current construction phase. The good news is that if they are able to incorporate it into the current construction project, then the gold line is very likely to be completed to Montclair by 2026, rather than 2028, which was often touted as the completion date for the entire project. The reason for that is that the Glendora to Pomona segment is one year ahead of schedule, and that project is expected to go, excuse me, go fair operational in early 2025. So with the majority of the work done on the Glendora to Pomona segment, the construction authority will be able to concentrate exclusively, to a very significant degree exclusively, on the Pomona to Montclair segment, which will allow them to complete the project again by 2026, with very likely going fair operational either in late 2026, early 2027. So let's hope that the governor does agree to sign the trailer bill. It is my understanding that Mayor Garcetti, Los Angeles, met with the governor on Friday to also put his support behind his signing of the trailer bill. And frankly, everything that I'm hearing from the legislative offices of the San Gabriel Legislative Coalition, which were the primary backers of the trailer bill, is that the governor is very much inclined to move forward on signing the legislation. And if that happens, then it is very likely that the construction authority can move ahead and add this into the current project. So let's keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you. And just add on to that, I believe we have a deadline for Mr. Starr, October 5th, that's when the existing procurement expires, and the contractor indicated they will not extend that contract. So it's obviously even more crucial, the governor adds this to the bill, the funding, and then we're going to have to move pretty fast to get all the agreements in place prior to October 5th.
October 7th.
Thank you, October 7th, which is a day after the SBCTA meeting in October, the board meeting. On July 8th, I was very fortunate to attend the Chamber of Commerce, their installation of their officers and their board, and I appreciate Councilmember Johnson, her involvement, and obviously invited me, and want to just congratulate both Mayor Protemru and Councilmember Johnson, as now board members of the Chamber of Commerce. On July 10th, I attended a grand opening of Lucky Art Crayon here in Montclair. Yes, I said the word crayon. It's located on Hope Boulevard on the south side. It's just about, I don't know, maybe 400 feet west of Cardenas. This is, the best way to describe this is like kind of going to, I don't want to say Dave and Buster's, but you go in these different rooms, and you're able to make crayons, the best way to describe it. Plus, they have face painting, and they have some other activities, not just for children, but also for seniors. And you'll pay, I think it's $15 to go to these activities, and they also have a snack bar there. So I would really encourage anybody here in Montclair to go visit this outfit. This is the first one in the United States, and their goal is to expand it to other parts of the country. I do want to say that the good news on the COVID-19, in terms of vaccination, 60% of Montclair residents are vaccinated, this is 12 years and older, or 53% are fully vaccinated. And we're doing better than the county trend, because the county trend is 54% vaccinated and 47% fully vaccinated. And I also want to state, in the county of San Bernardino, that if you're 68, 60 years or older, 70% of this age group, 60 and above, are vaccinated. And mostly, at least easily, three-quarters are fully vaccinated. My age group, 50 to 60, is probably around 50, excuse me, 65% vaccinated. And then, of course, you start seeing a big drop-off below the age of 50. And then, the last thing I want to say is, I appreciate the city manager newsletter coming out. I saw it today, and it was a very good newsletter. Okay, so I will now ask my council colleagues, I'm going to start my left, any comments from either member? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm really, really excited for this also, and these flyers are very cute. My 16-year-old sister was so excited to go to this, so it really is good for all ages. And I wish we had a winter concert series and a fall concert series, so maybe in the future.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one quickie and one announcement. I would concur with Mayor Dutre, crayonology is a fabulous place. I never knew so much about crayons and what you could do with them, and how you could, it was really a fun place. And when I went, as I was approaching it, I had the thought process that it would be a cool place to take my grandchildren, but I think I'm going to leave them with their parents, and I'm going to go by myself. It looked like a really fun, cool place to be. And then, the announcement that I have is that there is a new e-waste event coming. For those of you who have purchased new electronics and want to get rid of your old electronics, the e-waste event is this coming Saturday and Sunday, July 24th and 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It'll be held at the Montclair Chamber of Commerce. That address is 8880 Benson Avenue, Suite 110. It is a drive-through, oh, I'm sorry, in the city of Montclair, on the corner of Benson and Arrow. It is a drive-through event, so it's touchless. You just put whatever you want to donate in your trunk of your car, drive up, somebody will take it out of your trunk, and you'll be on your way. It'll take less than a minute. So please, put that on your calendar and plan to attend Saturday, July 25th, and, excuse me, Saturday, July 24th, Sunday, July 25th, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's all I have to say.
Great. Okay, how about my right? Anybody want to speak on my right? Go ahead.
Go first if you want. Go ahead. All right. Regarding crayons, the rumor is, is that Marines eat them. Did I say that right? You got it. Therefore, the joke is, I was right then. So if he laughed, he got the joke. Gabe and Robert, again, thank you for all your efforts with respect to the Fourth of July fireworks issue. I know the mayor drove out with you a few times. I opted to ride with police twice, so I can vouch for all your activities. Again, I'm very much appreciative. To the police department, thank you for all you do. There are certain parts of town that I'm becoming accustomed to and acquainted with, and some areas of town need help, and some are doing well. But I enjoy the ride-alongs. Again, we had a little bit of a less-than, I guess, active night on the night of the Fifth, but nonetheless, it was eye-opening, just the incidents and the calls that I saw. Wanted to bring up a couple of things, and I want to preface these comments with respect to these issues by saying that they're troublesome for me, and they're consistent with the comments I've made in prior council meetings, so they should not come as any surprise. And they are regarding staffing, and it's regarding a new policy proposal or policy that is being asked of employees to take effect July 22nd. But before I go into that, I need to ask, is the city charged any fee for job postings that it posts repeatedly on either NTN or CalJobs or whatever, any of the sites that we use?
Well, if they're commercial sites, yes, we are charged fees, yes.
So do we have a bill that we get for NTN for just a flat fee, or is it just by virtue of how many postings we post, create, make?
NTN is the testing site that we use for public safety, and I think that that's an annual fee. Is that correct? Yes.
And so we have an unlimited use of number of postings with respect to NTN?
Well, I don't think it's unlimited. I think the contract is for a set amount.
Well, okay, I'll delve into my comments as to where I'm going with this. For me, I still would contend, we've made some gains with respect to this fiscal budget that we just are into, days into, concerning staffing in police department, and unfreezing six positions, hiring dispatchers and whatnot. We're addressing needs in public works and Code Enforcement, and there is, I would say, perhaps some cautious direction given to staffing the fire department. But I do want to bring up the issue about job postings, and I'm going to say a few things that are leading up to something. We presently have listed a posting for an entry-level paramedic firefighter position.
Yeah, Mr., I'm going to have to call you over. I think we're in violation of the Brown Act. If you wish to discuss an item you're bringing up about postings, it's kind of a personnel matter, but if you want to put this on the next agenda, have a discussion, and you want to put something right into staff, explain what the issue is, I suspect we need to go that way. Am I correct, we have a Brown Act violation here? I don't want to put you on the spot, Ben, but I think we have to be kind of careful.
Well, it's public domain already. It's posted. I'm just addressing the.
Right, but you sound like you're trying to give staff direction, and it sounds like to me, if you have a concern about an item, we probably need to put this on the next city council agenda.
If that's, well, if, sure, by all means, let's have this be a formal.
And so if you just want to explain your concern or issue, and that we understand what that is, and then if the council concurs that, we'll put that on the next city council agenda item. So go ahead if you want to.
There is a, there is a need to differentiate between a conclusive posting and a time-certain posting. And in the public safety industry, if you will, line of work, any potential applicants that view the listings, one, they're charged per number of clicks that they do on a job search. Two, there's a $50 fee for each applicant for any public safety posting that they must pay in order to apply for a position. Not that it's coming from the city.
Staff, so I think, and I understand your concern, so I believe you want staff to come back and have a discussion, if this is the appropriate way, we should allow posting. I believe that's what you're asking for, Councilmember Lopez?
No, that's not what I'm asking for, but if that's what I'll take, if that's what I'll get to have this discussion further, then yes, I'd like it agendized regarding postings of staffing positions with a policy regarding them.
Okay. So I'll ask the city council, do you wish to have this on the next item? Is there any opposition to having the next item?
I'm not sure I understand the request.
I'd like to explain.
The question is now, is that, the policy is, if a councilmember requests to put an item on the next agenda, then we need concurrence of the majority of the council. In this case, it'll be three members. So any members are opposed to having it on the next agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I think that one of the wonderful things about city government is that we have this wonderful staff, whose job it is to handle those issues. And so, you know, if I were in Councilmember Lopez's shoes, what I would do is discuss it with staff, and then, after discussing it with staff, if we did not come to a resolution, then I'd like, then it would be on the agenda. But at this point, I can't say that I agree or not, because I don't even know what we're talking about. So this, I really believe we should refer this back to staff, and let them resolve whatever issues are, or determine if there's even an issue that needs to come to the agenda.
Okay, Mayor Protemru, you have a.
I wasn't done with comments, if that's where you're going, Mr. Mayor. I had another item. But I do want to say, I did clarify in an email regarding this issue to staff, so I've already brought it to staff. I made the suggestion regarding the differential between a continuous posting and a time-certain posting.
Okay.
And that request was not.
Let's do this.
Was ignored, so here I am.
Okay, let's do this. Let's just put it on the next engine item, and then, excuse me?
I'll be fine with that.
And then, I will ask that you work with the city manager, Starr, regarding your issue, and then bring it to the city council level.
And by bringing it to the agenda, I'm hoping we can have some clarity on it, because I'm not completely clear what the issue is, but that's okay. We can't really discuss too much of it, so by bringing it to the agenda, we'll have some clarity on it.
Okay, that's fine. That's ordered, then. Go ahead.
My next point, I do have some questions. I am, so that you guys know what the topic is, I am going to express some reservations regarding the email that all city employees, including us, council, got regarding a new requirement to have a sticker on city employee IDs to now be fully deemed fully vaccinated. I have some reservations, because the policy, in my opinion, was not vetted by council. I think the policy treads on some serious potential legal concerns and issues of privacy that we, as a. that we as a council are going to be held liable for, potentially held liable for, irrespective of the policy. We were not consulted. There was no, there was no legal analysis taken into the policy, at least at our level, but yet we're the ones, as the electeds up here, that are going to be responsible for any repercussions or potential repercussions of this policy. There's a lot of questions I have and I'm very leery of it. I think we should take a more cautious approach. I did speak to an attorney who told me that the requirement.
You know, again, again, this is a personal, this is a personal issue.
The deadline is this 22nd.
I understand, this is a personal issue. So we are going to closed session. We're going to have, we're going to have negotiations with, under memorandum of understanding. I believe we can discuss this in closed session. Are you comfortable with that, your attorney? Or?
I don't know that that has been properly agendized for the meeting. And if I could have a couple minutes. You know, the general rule is that we do not discuss anything that's not on the agenda. Okay, that's the general rule. No discussion of a subject that's not on the agenda. Now, there are some exceptions. You know, you can respond quickly to a question asked by a constituent. You can make a brief comment about an activity or thing you attended, but we're crossing the line and getting into major discussions on matters that are not on the agenda. And I don't see that the mask policy or whatever would be covered in a closed session item, certainly not the ones that are agendized for this evening. So I just want to remind all the council members that non-agendized matters are, you know, are generally not permitted under the Brown Act with those rare exceptions.
Okay, so I'm going to do this. I'm going to ask that we have this item on the next agenda as well?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may add.
Hold on, I wasn't done with my comments, Mr. Mayor. I want to.
Well, the problem is, Ben, is you're raising litigation, you're raising a personal issue.
Also going to raise the timeliness of this because of the deadline it's given.
So I think we should be cautious about your comments. You're raising an issue of concern. What is it you're requesting at this time, Ben?
Well, there's a matter of urgency then. This either gets put on hold because it has a deadline of Thursday, 5, 6:01 p.m., Thursday, July 22nd. Either the policy gets on hold until we can vet this out and it get agendized, or we have to address this now, as far as I see it.
Okay, I'm going to allow the city manager to speak because I know, I'm allowing him to speak because I also know we have to follow CalOSHA rules, which is, what's occurring about. City Manager Star, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The city is in fact following CalOSHA guidance or directives. CalOSHA issues regulations. They're different than guidance that are issued by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention or by the California Department of Public Health. CalOSHA regulations are in fact law. So when they issue a regulation in relation to a workplace and we fall under the direction of CalOSHA, we are required to follow those regulations. CalOSHA issued a directive that all employees who are vaccinated are required to provide evidence that they have been vaccinated if they do not want to wear a face mask while at work. This directive only relates to employees. So a directive was issued by the city manager that follows CalOSHA directive. That directive stipulated that Montclair employees are to wear face masks if they are not vaccinated. If they are vaccinated, it is their option to turn in evidence that they have been vaccinated. If they choose not to turn in evidence that they have been vaccinated, then they are required to wear face masks. There are individuals in this organization on the city council who have not turned in evidence that they have been vaccinated and are refusing to wear a face mask. That is in violation of CalOSHA. It's making other employees in the organization uncomfortable. That truly needs to be addressed by the city council as it relates to the sticker that goes on the badges. That is no different than the guidance that is, or the directive that has already been issued by CalOSHA and the California Department of Public Health. And the CDC are recommending that stickers be placed on identification badges, if those are available, so that people can use those as an easy reference point, a reference point to demonstrate that they have been fully vaccinated. That's as simple as it gets. It's a directive that is authorized by the city council to the city manager under the municipal code that directs that the city manager will be the director of emergency services. As director of emergency services, it is my authority, without having to go back to the city council on a regular basis, to direct the employees in this organization to follow directions and guidance that are issued by the Centers for Disease Control, the California Department of Public Health, and CalOSHA. That directive did go out in relation to the mask-wearing policy, and it also went out in relation to the stickers on the ID cards. I don't see that as an issue that needs to come before the city council because that directive was already provided by the city manager pursuant to CalOSHA regulations. If the city council wants to bring it forward as an item for discussion, we can certainly do that. But these are the directives of CalOSHA. We are required to follow those directives. If we do not follow those directives, then we are subject to fine by CalOSHA. And those fines can be quite significant. CalOSHA has been known to issue fines at the rate of $10,000 a day cumulative for each day that the violation occurs. And we intend to avoid those violations to the extent that we can by issuing the necessary directives to ensure that we remain in compliance.
So, thank you. So obviously, we have a CalOSHA rule that we're going by, and I just want to note that I do have a sticker on my ID card. So I want to set the example for all employees. And city manager, have we received a complaint, a formal complaint by one of our labor organizations regarding this policy?
I understand that there is a lot of unhappiness in the organization, that there is a failure at the top to not comply with the CalOSHA directive. And I understand that a number of complaints have been filed with CalOSHA, and the city can expect to be under investigation by CalOSHA.
So I want to ask that we put this into closed session or next meeting for further discussion. I'll let the city attorney decide what the appropriate manner is, if it's going to be pending litigation or if it's just performance evaluation. So we could, I think, I think this is a confidential matter that needs to discuss in litigation. And then if we discuss it in the open session, that could, that could, what, place in, places in negative legal manner? So is the council okay with that?
Point of order.
Council's okay with that? Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, is your suggestion then to place on hold the requirement to be affected by July 22nd?
Yeah, with that action, can't take this evening because that's not on the agenda, but we'll have this on the next city council meeting, closed session for further discussion. I'll let the city attorney decide what the appropriate closed session, section number of the California code.
Well, and I would argue that there are many within this organization who are taking a position in defense of the employees' right to privacy, as am I. I clearly disagree with the sticker, the sticker, because it just, it's like disclosing your medical history to everyone around you when it's supposed to be private, and I think that's a legal issue. I don't think anybody wants to hear me speak anymore, so I'll be quiet. I have plenty more to say, but I'll probably be gavel down.
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, the federal government, as well as the state, have declared that the revelation of a vaccination is not a violation of HIPAA, which is usually what people refer to as the reason why they want to keep that confidential. But because of the nature of the pandemic and the direction of the federal government to try and move the American society to a herd immunity, that argument has been taken off the table and the federal government has clearly made it evidenced in the various laws and regulations that have come down that that is not an acceptable argument and that when an agency like CalOSHA issues a regulation requiring that employees provide evidence of their vaccination if they want to not wear the mask because it is a voluntary choice on their part, then they, all they need to do is continue wearing the mask and not show the CDC card.
Okay, Mr. Mayor Protan Rule.
First of all, I want to again thank police, fire, code enforcement, all of our staff that helped create the environment to have a greatly reduced problem on the 4th of July. It was important and I think it was successful. The success shows in the numbers we had today, so thank you all. Mayor Dutre brought up about 50% of those in the city have now been, received an inoculation. I would encourage people who can and are able to receive an inoculation to do so. I had mine. My only adverse reaction was a little bit of vertigo on the first shot, and that's primarily because I was the old way of doing things where you'll remember years ago, if you were going to get an inoculation, you didn't eat, you had it on an empty stomach. Well, I did that, and that probably wasn't the best thing to do, but I did have my inoculation. I put it in the same thing as I have a dog at home and, so that he doesn't run around and maybe get loose and have rabies, I make sure that, I think it's every two years, I have to have a rabies shot for him, so that's what I look at it for me. With the Delta variant, which is really growing exponentially throughout Southern California, although not as bad as Florida, 20% of the cases in the U.S. are now coming from Florida. But the group that seems most likely to contract the Delta variant are those aged 18 to 40. So I really encourage, if you can and are able to, to please receive an inoculation. It's good for you. I want to congratulate the new, the returning CAC members for their work. They were reappointed at the last meeting and I appreciate everything they've done. The same thing for our planning commission where we had some familiar faces returned and one new person in Krishna Patel. I really congratulate all of them and I look forward to continuing to work with them. They're not here this evening, but again, I really want to congratulate the CAC members for the hard work they did in the home beautification. It's a little more difficult this year because of the pandemic and what we were able to and not able to do. And I think they did a great job in getting out and finding these homes, driving through our city, and really, in two different categories, picking homes that truly reflected what we want to see in this city. It was mentioned earlier by the mayor and by the city manager about the Gold Line. I attended the JPA meeting Thursday last. We did mention about the $540 million at the state level to bring it here to Montclair. For those of you who have been following this, we thought we would have this many years ago, but it's still going on. I know Carolyn, you were still on the council and we were working on this years ago. It's getting there. It's a huge effort, but it's one that will bring economic development to the city, to the region. I want you to think of the people you know who may have jobs that are not served by MetroLink. Maybe they're in Pasadena. The new GM Design Center is going to be located in Pasadena. How wonderful. And it won't be that far from a Gold Line stop. So we may have people who take jobs there, they don't want to commute on the freeway, they can get onto the Gold Line and stop. I think there's three different stops in Pasadena for them. There's stops in Arcadia. Many people have to go to areas near Union Station but not served by MetroLink. This is a great way to get them there. And the fact that it's going to help our whole city is wonderful. Look at any city that has mass transit. World-class cities have mass transit. Go to Paris, go to Rome, go to London. You can think of many of these cities. Mass transit makes those cities, but it's not exclusive of the automobile. The argument out there is, oh, you're trying to force everybody on the Gold Line. No, no, no. The car and the Gold Line go hand in hand. They have to. And we still need a car to drive to the station. In many cases, you're still, even if you take the Gold Line every day and live right there, you still need your family car to get around and do other things. So the mass transit and the car in Southern California are not exclusive one of the other. They really join hand in hand with each other. I was unable to attend the chamber installation, which was, I should have been there, but I had a difficult workday that day and I had some last-minute meetings I had to attend. Now that everything's opening up again, there's some more in-person meetings that I have to get to and I can't always do them on Zoom. And just finally to say that I really appreciate during this pandemic, still ongoing, I will continue to wear a mask even though I've been inoculated, just for my own personal safety. I really want to thank all of the employees in this city, no matter where you are on the spectrum, for coming together and really keeping this city going during a pandemic, whether you're somebody who is on the street, whether you're in administration, whether you're a dispatcher, whether you're the person who cleans the city hall. I could go through every category there is. Really thank you all for coming together in a pandemic and continuing to make this city look good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're a city of 40,000 residents and us five represent those 40,000 residents and those 40,000 residents expect that this is a professionally-run city, obviously with great services. And I know we have employees in the city and, you know, they approached me in the past about issues, and I'm pretty sure they approached all councilmembers here about issues either currently or in the past. And as we know, we do have what's called memorandum understandings. Part of that, there's grievance process. In addition to that, you have California law that we have to follow. So there are issues, grievances, there's a process to go through. And I also remind that, you know, if there's employees or unions that have their own grievances and they go to one councilmember, I will remind them, there's five councilmembers. And there's a process you can go through. There's a city manager, he doesn't respond, then you can address all five councilmembers in a memorandum. And I've said that in the past. I've had, I remember one association, five, six years ago, what I met with, and I said, okay, put your grievances in a letter addressed to all, the entire city council and the city manager, and then we have a responsibility to respond. And I will again present that to our unions and to follow that process that's involved here. So I'm going to now call that we go into closed session and then we'll be back later with closed session announcements. Thank you.